Meeting to order, it's the Moretown Select Board. It's Tuesday, August 17th. Meeting tonight here in John Cogan's meeting room. Thank you all for coming. I'm gonna start on the first agenda item. We have general public comments. Is there anyone here for general public comments?
I just have a comment regarding the legal trail issues that have been brought up a lot lately. We did a site visit on Legal Trail 15, and it keeps being mistaken, the minutes weren't corrected on 7/6/2021. I keep saying Legal Trail 18. That would bring you into a whole nother part of the town. I think they call that Shoeyford Trail.
Alright, we'll look at the meeting minutes and rectify those next meeting. Anything else Travis?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, is there anyone else for general public comments? Alright, seeing none, move on to the next agenda item. We have the Mad River Valley Rec District Committee. And looking for Mr. Rosenberg, is that you sir?
I'm here, yeah, hi.
How are you doing today? Anybody with you?
Yeah, this is my son Sonny.
Hey, how you doing Sonny? Ah, maybe. Well, thank you for coming and you submitted a letter to take the place of Eric Tietrude on the committee.
Right, yeah. So, we moved here about a year ago. We're just looking for opportunities where we can help. And this seemed like a committed need to see Phil. It seems like a pretty straightforward administrative position. I've been the president of my condo board in Brooklyn for almost 10 years now. So I'm familiar with sort of basic work procedure. And then anything sort of administratively, I'm a great communicator. I'm happy to sort of work on a team and do whatever I can to help keep that meeting moving forward.
Well, great, I don't think it'll be anything close to being the president of the condo association.
It's a small building.
Brooklyn, you said Brooklyn, right?
Yeah.
So what, how'd you find Moretown?
That is a good question and a long story, so I'll keep it quick. But we came over to the Mad River Valley last summer. We had a rental house in Warren that was really just, the house looked nice. So we ended up there. And then as soon as we landed here, realized that we weren't gonna be able to bring them sort of back safely into school in the fall last year back in Brooklyn. We decided we were just gonna make a full go of it and live up here full time. So we started looking for property immediately. The house we found happened to be in Moretown. Just a lucky coincidence because we love Moretown. The location is perfect for us. The towns, I mean, great, the schools are fantastic, everyone's been super welcoming. So we're very happy that we ended up finding a house we found here.
Well, certainly welcome, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. Interested, you know, it's nice that we have people moving in and we just like to see who draws them here. So thanks, it'll be a very, the committee is, I'm not even certain how we meet quarterly. Sasha? Sasha, she's our assistant, she's over here. She can get you the information when they're meeting. Get you set up there so maybe you can get some meeting minutes and find out what's going on. But we certainly appreciate you putting your hand up and willing to do this. Again, it won't be a big stretch, but it's a fun thing. It's the Mad River Valley Rec District. And they have the Fields over there, which our part in the rest committees a little less than than like Wakefield, Warren, or Bayston. We don't have, only voting is on the Fields themselves. Other things that we kind of stay out of in that area there. Anyways, anyone else, questions for Mr. Rosenberg?
I just hope you come to Moretown.
Oh, we will.
September 25th.
We get to hang out, right?
Yeah, you'll be there.
Very good, alright.
Can I use things?
It starts on the Venus this afternoon, listening to that game driving up. Unfortunately, but. So I would move to appoint Sam Rosenberg to the Mad River Valley Rec District. John, I'm gonna leave that to you. If there are no further questions, all in favor go ask.
Aye.
Alright, Sam, there you go.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
And if you'll excuse me, I'm gonna run now too.
Absolutely.
Been very good. Alright, everybody, thank you guys.
Nice meeting you again.
We'll see you on the 25th.
We'll see you on the 25th.
So Joyce, we have you calming the traffic. These troopers came in, once they heard you were on the agenda, you were gonna calm the traffic. And so they wanted to learn.
Should I come up there?
Yes, please, I'm sorry, please, sir.
Hello, everyone.
Hi Joyce.
So, calming the traffic. So this is, this is an effort that's been going on for about six months, I think. I've been talking to John and Don about various issues in Moretown. And we've had lots of back and forth with various people at V-Trans and at the Central Mountain Regional Planning Commission. And I have sent a document, oh, somebody has it, somebody else has it. Well, you all have it?
Yeah, we all have it.
You all have it? Oh, excellent, excellent, excellent. So I tried to collect the most informative missives that I received in order to give you all the same information that I have. And I think what has to happen next is that you all have to decide what the priorities are. Because we can't do everything that's on this list. And everything, of course, takes a little bit of bureaucratic pushing. So, we can start with the easy one maybe. I've been warned that there are people who would like to see a mirror at the intersection of 100B and the Moretown Mountain Road, where that crazy curve happens.
Right, we had a guest last, our last meeting, he came in and asked about it.
Oh, I see, okay.
Wasn't real pushed, so we looked and see what you think.
Okay, well, unfortunately, if you're thinking about putting a mirror in the state right of way, that cannot happen. V-Trans does not allow that. And I noted here that they're worried about those mirrors because they can create glare, especially at night. And because they can be confusing to drivers who don't know the intersection and can't tell where they're looking, where the mirror is showing them, so they say. Okay, so there is a set of FAQs that talks about mirrors. And if you can get off the state right of way, then you can install a mirror if that's what you want to do. So, that's a possibility.
Alright.
Any questions or discussion with that?
I don't think so. I don't think that was a big priority of ours.
Okay. Alright, so then we'll move on to some issues that came up through John and Don. And I finally got a good response from a new guy at V-Trans, John Kaplan, who's the manager of the Bike and Ped Program. So, let's see. First off, there was this issue about a speed sign before the new bridge right down here on 100B. And at the time that I wrote, there was no sign and it was supposed to be there. And I was told that it was, I don't know, something happened to it, it was knocked down, but now it's been replaced. So the speed sign, 30 miles per hour, is now there. So that took care of one issue. Second issue was, well, okay, my numbering is not the best, but anyway. Then we talked about sidewalks and crosswalks and pedestrian safety in the village of Moretown. So there's lots of information here. And V-Trans has its opinions about crosswalks and sidewalks and thinking that what's there is okay. There is another project that's coming to do the sidewalk on the west side, far side of 100B. And the question is, do we really need that sidewalk? And do we want people crossing the road from one side to the other? So, if you do want to change the sidewalk project, at this point, it would take some work. It means undoing what's been done to set up that project, so that would take some work. If you want a different sidewalk in a different location, or a crosswalk or whatever, then I think Ian DeGudis is the, DeGudis, how do you say his name? Ian DeGudis may be the person to talk to.
I think they're already gonna have that in their plans. The extra crosswalk across the story of the town.
Somewhere in that area, yeah? Or by the post office or?
Yes, that's in the sidewalk plans.
Okay.
Well, they did paint one here. I don't know if anybody noticed, they did paint a crosswalk right in front of the school.
Yeah, they painted it.
Yeah, they did put that one and painted that one in the other day.
Okay.
So that's, that's good.
Alright.
And I also, someone was telling me that Carrie Dolan is actually working, or brought up some legislation that, because there's apparently a regulation that in order to have a crosswalk, you have to have two regular, you know, two sidewalks. Regulation sidewalks. And I guess she's brought up some legislation to see if that can be changed. That it can be a crosswalk without having a so-called, right? Nothing to do with Moretown, sorry, I noticed. I know Wakefield is working. They have a whole thing going on trying to work on traffic calming and transportation issues and stuff. I don't know if that's where that came out of or not, but. Anyways, just thought I'd throw that out there.
So it hasn't passed?
Oh, no, not that I know of, no.
Okay, I can check on that.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, that's interesting, alright. And then there was discussion of bike lanes. So there's a description here of what it takes to get a bike lane. Minimum width of bike lane adjacent to curbing is five feet. So it talks about how you could configure the road if you wanted to put in a bike lane if there's room. When a paving project comes through, that would be a good time to add bike lane markings, which is yes. So, maybe V-Trans is gonna measure the next time they come through. So, I don't know if you want to push harder on this or wait till we measure and see if it's possible.
I don't think this is gonna be.
You don't think it's wide enough?
Not gonna deter the traffic.
Well, if the sidewalk doesn't happen, then it could be a good figure.
But the sidewalk is gonna happen.
Alright, not looking good for bike lanes. Okay, so the next issue was radar speed feedback sign, one of these signs that lights up and blinks at you if you're going too fast. And there is agency guidance about all that that I've put in at the end of this. Actually, it probably didn't print out for you, because he's gotta print out, right? But you can find it on the V-Trans website if you need to. So it says there's already one of these speed signs, a blinking radar feedback sign north of the school for self-cloud traffic. Any additional sign, radar sign would be the responsibility of the town through an 1111 permit, blah, blah, blah. The cost would be on the town. And you need to have a speed study first, so again, we're running into the little.
Thank you on that. So if there's already a sign, which we've had a speed study for, put that sign up. We've already justified putting up a speed sign, why would we need to do another speed study?
Well, apparently they tell you, they give you one.
They give one sign for studying on the same road.
Going the other direction.
Yeah, but I think the thing has to be where the, where the study is. I mean, it would have been right there at the school. And if we want to look one further south on the other side of the bridge, we'd have to have, that would be the location to do the study. Which could be different, I don't see how it could be more than 30 miles per hour entering into the.
Well, what about the other part of this, the other idea? And I'm sure Joyce was ahead of you there, you could move the existing sign, relocate that.
So the question's, would you have to have a speed study to relocate some? I don't know.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Probably so.
Where are you, where are we thinking we put, will we put it all the way down by the bridge coming into town? Which is where it should be. Which is really where it should be.
And also make before Mainers.
Move the one that's on the hill.
Before Mainers?
Well, somewhere up in that vicinity.
Before the curve?
I mean, it's very different. You go by Mainers, it's 40 going by Mainers, which is what, that's what it is right now. And then you're seeing a sign that says 30 miles an hour ahead, you know, one of those warning signs. And that's really until you get down the hill and you're almost to the cemetery. That's when you first start to see 30 mile an hour speed limit. But coming down that, you know, a car with momentum, unless you're really being a courteous driver, you're coming down the hill at 45, 40, 45, maybe, and 50. So people are coming past Freeman Hill Road and around that corner. These guys could probably attest to it, you know. So you're in town at a good rate of speed until they see the, get to the flasher, you know?
Maybe before, I think, if you put it before Mainers, they're gonna pick up that speed again going down.
That's right.
So if you go around the corner before Freeman Hill, the cemetery, maybe right before the cemetery on the right-hand side. Although there's a curve there, you would think that would slow people down, but it really doesn't.
Doesn't really.
But if you see it at the top of the hill?
Right, you might be able to. So Joyce, yeah, maybe we could see what kind of difficulty it would be to move those.
Do you understand?
Yeah, I mean, if, I would think that if we had a warning sign, you know, that reduce food zone before Mainers.
Right, you could do that.
Yeah, that might make sense. I'm really, I'm supportive of the radar speed feedback signs. I think they work well. I mean, I know us myself, you know, I think they, they really catch your attention. Even if we, if town has to invest in them, I think it's still a good investment, you know? I agree.
I think one other thought, and I don't know if Joyce helps, can ever be approached. I mean, it's gonna take a long time before we as a society come to grips with how we are in our cars and how we share the road or how we become courteous again. But even a meeting I went to once with the then Lieutenant here with Scott was speaking to the very same thing about courtesy. The thing that I find very interesting is when you, if you take someone coming here and come off of 89, you go through Middlesex Village, it goes from 40 to 35, and then you take the turn onto 100B and it's 35. And then you get down to, well, the dam, and it goes to 50. And there's not another speed sign until you get to almost, to pass your house, where it says to slow down to 40. So by the time people are getting there, they're, that's why so many cars go off the road there, as we know, in the curves, because they're coming into the curves so fast. That hello on a snowy night there, you know, I look out my window, oh, there's another one. But in any event, I wonder if something can be done even there, just on 100, just the speeds on 100B could be dealt with. I mean, maybe another sign that says 50 miles an hour or somewhere along the way instead of it just, you know? I mean, I know besides asking for more patrol, they only do so much, the sheriff and the state police. So anyways, it's just another comment in the traffic calming discussion as far as traffic and.
I mean, you're supposed to have the sign anytime there's a side road that comes out. For people who turn onto the road.
I don't know.
Isn't that correct? That's the way it was when we put up the village, or the signs in the village, in, on the village, all in Moretown. Yeah, Moretown, yeah. When we changed our speed limits, there's signs at every, I think at every intersection. That's correct. And I thought it was the same way with the state.
I don't know.
Another thing with the state roads is any, any road that isn't posted is a 50 mile an hour zone. So most of your, most of your state roads that are 50 aren't posted because it's, it's in statute that an unposted road is automatically 50 miles an hour, so that's, that's an issue. That's a large issue, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, Joyce.
Right, exactly. With Moretown, obviously, 50 miles an hour, way before it's posted, so. Now they're doing more 70.
Yeah, and to that gentleman's point, in the traffic calming discussion, you know, it's gonna be a continual thing. You know, it's not all just tonight, you know, it's something to work on. I think in the long run, if we as a board could try to help figure out how the traffic on our, the speeds on our back, on the dirt roads in our town, all the towns, it's just, it's ridiculous how fast people drive on those roads. You know, 35 posted is someone's doing 40 or 45. And it's, our society is, I mean, maybe that made sense if it ever did back in the 50s or 60s or something. But now, especially with our new world of COVID, people are running more and walking more and biking more and they're out on the roads more, and there's more families, there's more people on, living on the roads.
But our cars go faster, they're smoother, you know, fill the bumps, you know, you've got, so.
And it also translates to the cost of upkeeping our roads, because the higher speeds on the roads tear up the road, so it's.
It's a constant, yeah, no, I think it's a lot.
And I know, I've been told that you can't lower the speeds on our roads without going through a whole thing with the state and doing a traffic study and it's $35,000 and it's, you know, but the whole thing is.
Travis, a quick question about signs. Do we ever go back over these roads to see if they're properly signed, signage? Like Ray was speaking about, like every intersection has been brought up tonight? Do they ever go back like after they've been put signs up and to make sure they're still properly signed everywhere?
I think we leave it up to our road foreman to, there's inspection of the roads, I think.
Here in town, yeah. Martin, those guys, I can't speak for the state if there's an auditor that goes out on those, but Martin or any of the crew, they're really usually typically pretty good. Or someone in the community says, hey, someone knocked a sign over. We don't, there's no SOP as far as this will do on a yearly basis or something.
I've noticed a few signs that have been down for years now. And they're posting stuff or still there, but the sign isn't.
You don't have to do it, let us, yeah, let us know.
Let us know we're there, you know, we do count on community, but you know, if somebody sees something wrong or.
Yeah, no, we're happy to take a look at it and see what the sign was and if it needs to be redone. Alright Joyce, let's move on to Gallagher Acres.
Gallagher Acres, right. So the issue here is that there are lots of families living in Gallagher Acres. There's no way to walk from Gallagher Acres into Waterbury. And you'd think that there might be some demand for that. So, yes, they're saying it seems reasonable to think that you might want sidewalks there. You have to put sidewalk in the highway, state highway right of way. So you have to get a state highway access permit from V-Trans. They did look at that and they do think that there's space for sidewalks, so that's a good thing. I've actually walked that a bunch trying to get to Snowfire after I get off the bus, the non-transit bus, and it's all horrible, it's horrible because it's no place to walk. Okay.
Yeah, it's also, there's another road there.
Fairground.
Fairground, both of those folks in there too, right?
Yep, absolutely. Yes, so they're suggesting that we try for the Bike-Ped Grant Program, the Small-Scale Bike-Ped Grant Program, which does not require scoping studies, so that's good. That cuts down the time a little bit. The next round of that is April 2022, so it gives time to prepare for that a little bit. And they're saying that we could probably get help from CDRPC if we wanted to move on that. There's another alternative, which is the Transportation Alternatives Program, but they don't have a small, small-scale program, so they're recommending that we try the Bike-Ped Program. They do say that getting some scoping, a feasibility study of a sidewalk might be a good idea so that we know something about the construction cost and feasibility. But certainly, if you want to move forward with that, I can talk to the Regional Planning Commission folks and see how to line things up to get moving.
No, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, very, yeah.
Clearly needs it. A lot of people have moved in there in the last few years. And if you can keep Cheryl Lynn copied on your correspondence, because she will typically, I mean, she is the one doing the grant stuff for us. So she's aware of what's going on, that would be a good start over there.
Right, so I included some earlier emails, but basically they're talking about this sign down by the bridge that disappeared and now it's reappeared, so that's there. So there's plenty of information and lots of, you know, bureaucratic stuff to think about if you want to push forward with anything. But what I've got on my list is investigate moving the radar speed sign closer to Mainers, right?
Or by, just by Freeman Hill or something.
Yeah, between Mainers and Freeman Hill, I'd say that.
Now, do you go over that bridge, you think?
Yeah, maybe we can all take a walk down sometime or a drive together and see where. Maybe the troopers can have some suggestions on that.
I was, I was thinking along your lines with that sharp curve there, people can only go so fast through that, but if you're saying they're continuing on past there, it might be good. I think you said back before the new bridge there, as they come down, that's probably, I think, earlier the better. As opposed, because most people, you know, even myself included, it's like, you don't want to be the one that's going fast when there's cars behind you. You're like, you don't want to be the one setting that thing off. So it's almost, the sooner you can get the momentum, if there's a line of cars coming out of the valley, I think that's probably your best bet. So whatever you think's a good spot, back it up a little more, you know? That's kind of my philosophy.
And on the north side here, what would you think?
I'm trying, I was trying to think of the geography there. Are you saying as people come?
So you come around the bridge?
The bridge there, and then just continue on?
Yeah, they start smoking it's.
Yeah, it's a pretty flat stretch, right? Is it by the garage or?
Before the dam.
Before the sand pit, yeah.
Yeah, I would say maybe just past the bridge, I mean, just on this side of the bridge throughout there. Because you have the S-curve and then the bridge, right?
Yeah.
So.
Maybe by the Eckards there or something.
Yeah, Eckard.
Eckards.
Eckard, Eckard. He's been called worse.
No.
I've called him worse.
And also just to throw something out, if you guys are looking at doing additional speed studies, I know several communities have portable signs that they can actually move rather easily that are either battery-operated, I think most of them are battery-operated. You recharge them, you affix a frame to a sign and you can actually move them to different places. So one sign could actually, you know, you could have it on the north end of the village at one point. And for a couple of days, you can recharge it, take it down to the southern end. And it's, as long as you're doing speed studies, it might behoove you to do on either end of the village at the same point. If the town is purchasing one sign, make it one that's capable of being moved to either end of the village and that way you kind of get a little bit more bang for your buck. You get two locations where you can put up your speed sign, but only have one sign. Obviously, there's one sign in one spot, but at a time, but you can, you can move it back and forth. There's several, several village areas that I'm aware of that do that exact same thing. It's a, it's an aluminum fixture that's on a sign and you just put it in there, you bolt it in real quick and you're off and running and you're out for another couple of days. Take it down, you recharge it overnight and you can put it in the other spot, so.
Do they, do they record data or do they just?
I think some of them are capable of doing that, but I believe they're gonna be like your fixed signs that have like the solar. that have like the the solar panels and things that are that are more constant, that have the ability to to plug into those, um, but there there could be some some updated technology out there that allows you to capture that on those on those portals.
So who's responsible for moving the sign after two days, moving, charging it up and moving it down the road?
Uh, I know.
The town?
Yes, yeah, yeah, the the road foreman or, you know, someone someone in the town with a vested interest in in moving it on.
Sasha would be that person. She knows something else, get her on Sasha's.
So you could put that as conceivably on a on a dirt back dirt road as well.
Anyway, yeah, I have three of them. Yeah, that's the same thing, and she can put it around them, get several poles and.
So does the state rent those to the towns or is something the town would have to?
Uh, yeah, it would be it would be purchased, the the town would purchase those, yeah.
Do you guys have access to the mobile ones that we?
We do, yeah, uh, obviously, there's a there's a pretty good demand across the eighteen towns that we cover, so we we rotate it through with that different something that we can put more time in the rotation for sure.
We'll finish up here, Joyce, and then we'll get you guys for a couple of minutes, that'd be great.
Right, so I think I'm done.
All right, so um, and we'll hear back from you, you're always good about that, we appreciate that, Joyce.
Okay, I have a few things on my list, okay, very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thanks for coming in.
Sure.
Spending the time and meeting with everyone.
Sure. No problem.
Good, see you in Moretown. All right, uh, so moving on, we have um Vermont State Police, we have Lieutenant White and Trooper Stackhouse. Guys want to roll forward, you do or? First, again, thank you, gentlemen.
These are quick.
We race out. I'm the champion, uh, thanks, guys, again, for coming, we have a a couple of things we want to um bring up, first traffic calming issues, cars and speeding issues that we're having, and then uh Callie and Ray want to, and the whole board, that they're looking at um ATVs and usage in the uh in the town and perhaps opening up a road or something, so we want to get your opinions on that, you know, what you thought, so, um, but starting off, and also when we're speaking with the with the speeding, uh, I guess one of the first things is, right now, we we don't have coverage only uh with what you guys can afford to do and with eighteen towns and probably I don't know how many people short you are, if you are people short, you know, it's probably a limited time that you could come through here, um. So one of the things, when you get back to the office, is maybe you can put a proposal together for uh if you if you're doing the hours in addition to what you're
Doing on a contract.
Yeah. On a contracted basis, we've done that in the past with the sheriff's office, um, but we'd like to see kind of what you guys have and you're right close by, or close by for immediate future anyways.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
At some point, um, but maybe you can share a little bit about what you do in town, and then we can just ask some questions there.
Yeah, so um, we ran some numbers, uh, just in the last, from from um August of last year to August of this year, just to kind of give you a a, you know, twelve-month snapshot of what's what we've been responding to in Moretown. Um, so in that one-year snapshot, we had uh one hundred and ninety calls for service um in the town of Moretown, um, and of no, one hundred and two of those are thus far in twenty twenty-one. So the first eight months of twenty twenty-one has captured more than half of those, um, of those calls for service. Um, on the the motor vehicle side of things, um, we've had, we had nine motor vehicle complaints, most of which were in the wintertime for vehicles off the road or or uh things like that. Um, issued thirty-eight warnings and twenty-one tickets uh within the town of Moretown. Um, and of the hundred and ninety calls, uh, we had arrested eight folks from everything from stalking, uh, three DUIs, restraining order violations, uh, theft, disorderly conduct, and domestics, so um, a whole gamut of of types, different types of calls um here in town in the last year. Um, and, you know, just to just to speak on kind of, you know, where where we're at, um, you know, not not unlike any other law enforcement agency or any other barracks throughout the state or throughout the country right now, we're experiencing staffing shortages. Um, the biggest majority of us, um, of for Middlesex is we've got three folks that are deployed uh currently and aren't due back until at least February or March of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we have uh one individual who's away on uh four months of extended training, but when when she returns, the entire area will benefit because she's training up a new canine, so our our former canine handler, um, retired her dog and now has a new dog, so going through basic training, so we will be back up online here towards the end of the year, at least for tracking, and then um, early next year, February, March time, should be gone for another six weeks for drug training, but then uh the dog will be up fully online for, and we'll have our um our canine asset back at the barracks, and then above and beyond that, we have uh two two outstanding vacancies um at the barracks, which, like I said, brings us to six, which um in retrospect, that's a little more than one quarter of our of our workforce. On on the average, on a weekly basis, uh, we have, we we have between forty-two and forty-eight shifts that we cover, so that's about three people per shift, and so with those three people per shift, we're we're covering eighteen towns plus uh the interstate from Wyverny down to Fransbury, so. It's uh, we're we're stretched pretty thin right now, but um I think, you know, like I said, it's it's not unique to to Middlesex. Uh, everyone across Vermont and across the country is having staffing issues right now, um, so the the good thing is, we have uh, we're slated for one one individual graduating the the Basic Academy on Friday, and um, due to COVID, the the academy had kind of had to shift, normally they do two classes uh every year, one in January and one in July. With COVID, they had to to cut that back, so they started in May. Um, so and originally in twenty twenty-one, they were, calendar year twenty twenty-one, they were only expecting to put one uh class through, they're actually starting another one right off in October. Um, right now, we have seventeen people that are assigned up to go onto that class, so uh, overall, just the state police, we, you know, it's going to take us a while to get back, but at least uh the academy is helping us out by by go ahead and jump-starting in another class really quick. So, um, and that'll be, you know, having having state police put seventeen through, that that accounts for over half of the the normal complement of the academy class, so um, we're taking up as many space spots as we can get with the hopes that come February or March, they'll kick off another class, and then hopefully by the end of twenty twenty-two, maybe we'll be on the same, back on the same uh schedule as having two classes a year, which you know, it it doesn't sound like much when you say, oh, well, we've only missed one class the last two years, but when you think about, well, that's that's an additional twelve bodies that we don't have, just in 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 the state police, much less the rest of the the state, so um, it accounts for a lot, and that's that's without the normal attrition of of retirements and people looking elsewhere and going to the feds and different stuff like that, so, which we've had our fair share of, um, so it's a little grim right now, but uh we're we're looking for the lighter, the light at the end of the tunnel, so we're we're headed in the right direction at least.
Well, good, it's a hundred and ninety calls that actually shocked me.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna add, that's probably a lot lower than a normal year, because we experienced during COVID that the call volume, although the the severity of the calls was, I think there was more family fights, you know, more DUI crashes, but there was much less last year, so I would say in a normal year, I should have looked into that, maybe twenty nineteen stat, but I I would guess maybe it was cut in half, but I think that's that's a pretty low number, and it's it's kind of shocking to think, oh, just more, a little more town, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, appreciate what you guys do, it's it's a hard job and
Yeah.
we certainly appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
But that's that is what the the trend was throughout the country, that COVID, the whole shutdown of COVID really brought on a lot more.
Yeah, we just we just found there's a lot more stuff going on in people's houses and people weren't getting out and so for sure.
Well, we have certainly lots of challenges, I mean, you know, especially when you tell me we have that many calls, um, you know, certainly, when you are going through, speeding is a is a priority here, I mean, it's one of the things that really uh if you heard different people talk here tonight, I mean, that's, you know, I guess that's the one thing that's visual too, we don't see very many calls. Um, so, you know, in that contract, that's what we'd be looking for, and not just in the village areas, but in in the back roads, um.
Watch one of us get pulled over.
Oh, no, I agree, it happens, we we do the contract for Eastmont failure, and I've met a lot of people for the first time on the side of the road, you know?
Yeah, you, uh, it's one of those things that I think we all tried, but that that's why those those blinking signs saved me, I'm I on the road all the time, and not, I don't try to speed, but just sometimes you're not, and you know, it's a common diesel engine, so I think those are very effective.
Yeah.
So the other thing, and me and Callie and Ray, you guys want to talk about it, is the uh ATV ordinance that we're thinking, or roads that we're thinking of opening, and what you guys thoughts are on that and your experience in different areas. So, what do you guys want to tell them, kind of where we're thinking of doing that and what's going on, Ray?
Yeah, sure, uh, so, um, it seems like, you know, more and more towns are letting ATVs and UTVs on the roads, and you know, we, you know, Moretown, particularly I live on the Jones Brook area, there's a lot of Class Three roads connected to Class Four roads, you know, uh, so there's a fair amount of ATV traffic on the roads, and um even now, even though they're not supposed to be there, uh, and I'm of the feeling that, you know, that, you know, making them, making an ATV ordinance and enforcing it is better off than where we are at, excuse me, which is, you know, it most, I I can honestly say, I think most of the riders in that area are ground destroying riding, and, you know, the older people like myself, but there is a lot of people that come in from like Berry and riding other roads up there, and it gets a little little wild at times. But that's not the only problem, it's, you know, a lot of problems also with Jeeps and other big uh eight, it's big trucks as well, so, um, I guess I'm looking for a little, you know, feedback, you know, what is have you experienced, any towns that have the ATV ordinance thus far, and how's it working out for you, or do you guys partake in the enforcement, or is that fish and wildlife?
Uh, so it, my, I guess my first question is, are these, the the roads that you're looking at, do they link up like the VASAA trail system uh in any way?
No, they don't.
No.
So, the fish and wildlife, VASAA actually is contracted through, has contracted fish and wildlife to enforce uh the laws on the VASAA trails. So the ATV violations and stuff like that, unless they happen right in front of us, they're typically not something that that we deal with, we don't have ATVs, so we don't have any, the the AT, the UTVs that we have are for search and rescue or, you know, just different stuff, we don't, we don't have anything that's that's kind of tied in for um for patrolling that sort of stuff. Um, snowmobiles is a little bit different, but um the the ATV stuff, we don't, we don't even have an outlet to patrol that, that's that's um, that's all fishing game. So just knowing that if there isn't any link to the the VASAA system, I don't know how that would how that would uh translate into enforcement. Um, not sure if the if the game wardens would would be up to coming coming in and and enforcing that stuff. So that would be the first thing is to, if you are going to open roads to just, I would, I would suggest that they actually link up some of your trail systems to to keep to keep the riders off of, to keep them within certain areas to to access the trails. Otherwise, you know, to even to to drive anywhere offside of anyone's property, it has to be registered and inspected, um, and from a a town, I would certainly, you know, mandatory helmets, uh posted speed limits, uh that sort of thing, but again, there's no way to really enforce that, uh which is, again, an issue. Places that I I've known about, that that I know about, that have had town roads that are that are open, um, it it's a, it becomes like a racetrack uh after dark, when when people start getting their adult beverages in them and and decide to to see how fast their Razor One thousands will go down a down a road. Um, and, you know, it just, it 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 typically will generate a lot more complaints about about that from anyone who resides on those roads, um, just late-night driving.
Yeah.
So we've had several Fadals in Washington, at least at least two that I know of with ATVs up in the notch in Washington, so again, that late-night party, and that's, and and you mentioned, maybe let's regulate it because it's happening, you know, either way, I like the philosophy, um, but I think I was at a Fado off of Jones Brook Road, one of the roads on the right where ATV crashed a couple of years ago and went off the road, he was going from his uh like his barn through his own trail on the property, and then was heading back down towards Jones Brook, and he went off the road and died. Maybe five or six years ago.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, um, again, just non-registered, no helmet, drinking, you know, went off the road, but um, I, and I'm thinking of Washington again as far as um dirt bikes and and ATVs and neighbors calling nonstop, and and they want it to end, you know, and they want us to come down and magically make it, they're stopped, but.
Yeah, yes. See, and that's, again, I guess that's the whole crux of the whole thing, why we were thinking of having, you know, making it legal, because you know, we've tried to put signs up, we've tried everything to try to keep people, you know, it's private property too, and they go up there, and then they go off on the private property, and they're destroying that. So the idea is, well, maybe if we have law, you know, but it doesn't really sound like it can be really enforced, so.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, probably the the biggest thing, is the enforcement portion of it.
Really, my only problem with with uh hooking up with VASAA, let's say, and I like VASAA, but the, then it gets on their um their state maps and whatever, and then it becomes a a magnet for an area for people from out of town to.
Probably for more people.
And more and then more.
Yeah, with that association, you're going to get.
Lynchville is already a magnet.
Yeah.
I mean, my property is bordered by Lynchville on one side and Haringbrook on the other.
Oh, yeah.
And it's it's a circle all the way around, and especially there's one set of kids up the road that come down and half the time, I mean, one kid basically said, I ride from Northfield over here on my dirt bike.
Yeah.
And he's fifteen.
Yeah.
So, but they come and just like back and forth.
Sure. I'm thinking of one kid in particular in Washington, who's probably generated thirty calls for us this year with, uh, you know, ATVs, so.
So you're suggesting probably your best alternative, if we want enforcement, is VASAA, we went through VASAA, is that?
Well, I I mean, it it's it's a double-edged sword, you know, at least through VASAA, you can, you at least have an enforcement outlet, um, because they are contracted with with fish and wildlife, um, but, you know, it with that comes, you know, you know, VASAA, now they they all of their trails are loaded into the the latest Polaris, and you know, it goes right into the GPS for the, you know, those expensive Polaris, right, you know, it's right in it, um, so it's it.
It's, yeah, it's difficult, because there are, there are lots like myself, who just like to ride around and
Yeah.
you know, don't want our truck riding around, right, a four-wheeler and.
I I would, I would certainly, you know, i- if just establish, you know, some sort of a, you know, a a speed limit, um, and just some some very strict requirements, um, you know, for helmets and stuff like that, uh, you know, it just.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna have Chad Barrett come in. I was just gonna have Chad Barrett come in and, and see what he thinks.
Yeah, I, I would highly recommend that, you know, obviously he would, he would probably know a lot better than I, you know, how, what steps would have to be taken to, to get that, that VASAA.
He's fishing, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think I know one of the guys at VASAA too.
They must be stretched, they, they have a huge trail system. They must be stretched just as thin as to try to do enforcement. I mean, you know, they must, I wonder what the trade off is, you know, you, you get tied into the system, but they don't really, how much can they really enforce another section, so to speak?
Yeah, that's probably good to speak with them to see what their thoughts are before we jump into it, see what they really think, you know.
Yeah, right. See, and, you know, I mean, I, I'm, I'm from the eastern side of the state, so, you know, if, if you haven't already talked to towns like Tomsom that have been, then had, they've had their, their town roads open for, for years and just see kind of how they, how they got into it. You know, most, most of my experience with, with the racetrack and, and having that stuff running at all hours of the nights is, is over there, over that way, you know. But a lot of their town, some of their town roads are, are paved roads, so you can get a, you can get a Razor 1000 going pretty quick until it hits that telephone pole and.
Yeah.
Hit somebody else, or hit somebody else.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then some of them aren't registered apparently either, that's the. What?
Most of them aren't.
Alright.
Yeah.
It's not like they can inspect them from the road, right?
No, but they at least have to be registered and inspected unless you're driving on your, your private property, your own personal property. So, just to, if, if we lived right here and I wanted to, to cross 100B, I would have to have it registered and inspected just to, just to cross the road legally.
And cross it roughly ninety degrees.
Ninety degrees angle, yeah.
There was someone on, on the rear road the other day, I saw that was driving without any registration, just, you know.
Well, I don't know, say those plates do fall off.
So maybe.
Alright, any other questions for the gentleman while we have him here?
Just a quick one, and I think you already answered this. Do you have any authority for your department on Class 4 roads or legal trails to like pursue or do any? Or is that fishing game like?
Well, we, yes, we, we can, but it's, you know, we, we have authority everywhere in Vermont, but it's, you know, you have to be, you have to be right there when it's, when it's happening, but we will not pursue any, any ATVs under those circumstances.
Very good.
How do you get a cruiser down some of those roads, I guess, huh?
What's that?
How do you get a cruiser down some of those trails?
You'd be surprised.
You'd be surprised, you'd be surprised when you get squeezed out. I've squeezed the Crown Vic in the long distance.
I bet.
Well, we really appreciate you guys taking the time to begin this, and your dinner, hour or whatever it comes, and it's good to have a, kind of a face to the name again. Sure. I've been a before lieutenant, appreciate it. Trooper Stackhouse.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for having us. Any, any follow up questions that pop up, feel free to email either one of us and as far as the town contract stuff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that. I can, I can be helpful to you, to you guys on that, just to kind of show you where, where we're at for, for numbers and things like that.
Yeah, that would be good. You guys have any restaurants you believe in?
I do in my car, I can grab.
Yeah, that would be good that week. So we have an email address and.
Thank you guys, thank you for doing what you do.
Yeah, thank you for.
Thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you. Alright, so Chuck, how are you tonight?
I'm well, how are you all doing?
Alright, so.
We're at the big table.
Yeah, the big, big, big people still.
Alright, so you all got the preview, that's fantastic. I am not gonna go through this in detail. It's a lot of actually repeat material from the last time I was here, so I'm just gonna kind of highlight what's changed since I was last here and then we can, we can get to the, the meat of it. So, a couple, a couple of major things have happened since I was in here in June. First of all, we have launched our high level design initiative. The idea of this is a design across our, you guys mind if I do this on backside? We have launched our high level design across the entire district. Obviously, we are focusing on certain areas first as the underserved people, but we do want to make sure we're building something that would be viable across what at the time was our twenty communities. Since then, Waterbury has actually joined, so Waterbury is now part of the community, which is good because it gets us access to some areas in Duckspur that were gonna be a little bit challenging before. And as part of that, there's still the pole inventory, which I was talking about last time I was here. And that is kicking off any day now. We're just waiting for a grant to hit our bank account. It has often happened, it's got held up a bit in the state and, and was waiting on somebody to hit, you know, approve and, and that hadn't happened, but it had been approved. So that has now been issued and we're just waiting for that to hit our bank account. We're hitting go and we're gonna start seeing trucks with CB Fiber's logo out doing this pole inventory. Since then, we have also announced our first towns that we are focusing on. As I indicated in the last meeting, Moretown is one of them, but we are focusing on Worcester, Middlesex, Moretown, Callis and Eastmont Pillar as our first areas of fit. They represent the towns that, one, make a nice contiguous network, two, have a great deal of underserved population. Middlesex, Middlesex in particular has a great deal of, of underserved population. Moretown doesn't have as high a population, but is part of a, a good balance of good network design along with the fact that it's the north end of our town and is particularly, particularly underserved. And we also had really high interest rates. People who were surveyed were very, very interested in, in Moretown and, and said they would definitely subscribe. And I think, you know, there's some population demographics in effect in Moretown that, that made that the case. So, the last thing I do want to call out is there's actually a map between the presentation on slide eleven. It'll actually show you a map of the areas that are considered underserved in Moretown specifically. So if you did get a color printout, you'll see that the, the houses with blue dots are served at the twenty-five slash three megabit per second or better. That is the FCC definition of broadband, or actually I think, yeah, twenty-five, three. We are looking to try to get a hundred, hundred, and there are a number of town, areas in the town that do even have a hundred, hundred. But all of those red dots are the people who have access to ten-one or worse. And I can tell you from personal experience, most of the Moretown Common Road is four-one or worse. And so, with that, I'm pleased to announce that actually Moretown Common Road is gonna represent one of our pilot projects where we do our, one of our first builds. There are a few reasons for that and I wish I could say I, I was personally responsible for that, I'm not. Fate's aligned and a lot of it has to do with some CARES Act funding that is likely to be coming through before the end of this year to allow us to do that build out. So, that's kind of everything that's changed. We've refined some of the, the numbers in here in terms of the figures and costs. They haven't changed that dramatically, so, you know, if you look back at the last presentation versus this presentation, you'll see that the numbers are fairly similar, certainly in the same ballparks. I think when I came in here, I mentioned full on pole data and design would be somewhere in the ballpark of sixty-six thousand. I think we've refined that to about seventy-three thousand now. And so, the next steps here are, you know, if the town is still interested in perhaps directing ARCA funding towards our direction as a, as a potential build out for community infrastructure, we would love to get into that conversation. To that end, we've passed you a memorandum of understanding that we drafted. It is worth noting, both Middlesex and Eastmont Pillar have hired the same attorney to review that draft on behalf of them. I forget the gentleman's name at this point in time, I will pass that on to the board, but there could be an opportunity for the town to save some money. I can tell you, there have been some pretty substantial changes to the MOU on behalf of those towns. In my personal opinion, I think they're good changes, even though they're representing the other side, so to speak. But I, I do think they're better for the towns and, and better for everyone involved and so, if you were to piggyback off of that, that would save the town some money in terms of getting it reviewed. So I guess the, the ask today would be to see if the board wants to move forward with something like this or what other sort of questions I can answer or information I can maybe provide you over the course of the, the next two weeks, if you wanted to defer it for two weeks from today and, and make it done.
How much were you asking for the seventy-three thousand, is that what you're asking for?
Today, you know, I, I do know that the Ron League of Cities and Towns has, has put out some statements around how they believe towns should be using this money. And, you know, as is typical, they're, they're advising a conservative stance and I think that's smart. So I would say it would be great if we could get that as a first tranche, if you will. Come six, eight months, if other opportunities haven't come before the board that seem as compelling, maybe you could consider a little more in our direction. But for today, that would get us through the pole audit and design for Moretown specifically.
So are you saying, like, you're expecting the town of Moretown total cost to be total million dollars?
Absolutely.
To the town?
Yep.
And this is money that we won't get back directly. The town will not get this money back through any part of the fees or anything like that. This is just investment money from the town for the community.
With one caveat, which is more money than we get doesn't come to debt service means we are able to have lower subscription rates for all of our subscribers. But we would spread that across the family.
But there's no direct, like fee on top of the fees that goes back to Moretown, say?
Not, not on this, no. I will remind you that as part of joining CB Fiber, there was an obligation to be willing to lease some space for some equipment at which you would be able to retract some fees on that, but it's gonna be a reminder in the, in the scheme of things.
So folks that already are, have, are in the blue dot, the blue dotted people that have a pile right now.
Correct, yes. And they're, they're probably.
They would switch, they wouldn't, I mean, those folks aren't gonna switch over, like, you know, or.
They could.
But they won't be in the, in the bowl, in the, how would they be able, they couldn't switch over unless that zone got, you got a system.
So we are doing pole inventory across the entire district, regardless of whether people are served or underserved. Our aim is to eventually serve everybody in our districts and just give them another opportunity for competitive choice as well. But that's not our priority. Our, our first priority is the people who need it most. So, you know, the people in the, in, in the southern end of town that have Wiesfeld, Champlain Valley Telecom, it would probably be five, six years best case scenario before we're lighting it up unless they happen to live in a space that we have to cut across to bridge to places that are underserved. And it is worth noting that we are in conversations with, with Wiesfeld, Champlain Valley Telecom to actually be our operator. Part of this is we have to establish the company that's actually gonna have the infrastructure to, you know, have line people out there to fix things when they come down and stuff like that.
So it might be that.
It might be that. There, there are other, a few other people who are, are vying for it as well.
But to, to Ray's question, is that so certainly the people who are underserved, it's, you know, yeah, I mean, I know people during the COVID thing, they were sitting in their cars in the middle of the winter at the, here at the, or at the town hall, so I do get it that it needs to happen. But the people who already have it, so they're, they'll be contributing, but still, you know, not being, they won't be a subscriber, but they're contributing as a member of the town, so.
Like when I pay my school tax, I don't have a kid.
No, and I'm not necessarily saying it's a bad thing, but that's, you know, some people might say like, well, you know, hey, what's going on here, you know, I don't know, just.
It's, it's an important call out.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how that.
And some, some communities have this consideration, some don't. Again, as I mentioned, Middlesex, it has a much larger percentage of their population that's underserved compared to us. We do also have a member of communities in Berry City and Montpilly where you have ninety-five percent served. Now, are we gonna build there anytime soon? No, and we've been transparent about that, but.
Oh, yeah, because it doesn't pay off yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the state taking any role in this or?
We have applied for grants from the state as well and received some, yes. And there's probably going to be more to come. As the overall project, we calculated to be about fifty million dollars before we add in Waterbury. It's not like we were going to get that much money from the state, but we are, we are going to get some.
I mean, now with the, I don't, it hasn't been filing tax, but the infrastructure bill, it could be funding through that.
Yes.
Right now, we're talking about the American Recovery Money, but the infrastructure, that's one of the things they're talking about is.
We, we are optimistic that we will have some opportunities there.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I mean, that's, you know.
So the other towns that you brought proposals to, are they, are they giving their, their full, what you're asking for or what's been your reception so far?
It's been positive. Middlesex did talk a little bit about whether they wanted to give the full amount to us. They haven't committed to that yet. Nor would I expect that to happen quickly because it's a large amount of money. But they're the only town, to my knowledge, that's talked about diverting the whole thing to us. I think Eastmont Pillar was going to do a, a pretty sizable portion, but we do have some communities that are not in our Area A that, that we're approaching as well, such as Marshfield, Plainfield, other areas where there are high underserved populations that we want to get the ball rolling as well.
Alright, I have a question.
Callis.
Callis, yeah. Yeah.
So as everyone recalls, we have about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars currently through the American Recovery Act funds. We have a couple of years to spend this and there's, I've spent some time on a, a couple of different conference calls where we go over. There's a lot of strings that you're gonna be, you know, and I's to dot and T's to cross when you're, when you're making these allocations. And so I think what I want to make sure is everyone around the board has taken an opportunity and gets, and I'll have Sasha pass on the link for the, and it's a document, there's a few different documents there. It's a VLCT, VLCT, I have them, VLCT. And you go through and reads, to the best of their knowledge, what their legal team has put together for us. It's not very exciting reads, I don't get too excited about it, but I think it's important that we know where it can go throughout the town. You know, because a lot of times, or I've been approached through, you know, different townspeople, say, hey, can you take that money and put it into this road or put it into this road? And those are the things that actually we can't do. So it's, it's best we have this knowledge, so when we start allocating money to the CB Fibers of the world or such that this is why we're doing it and this is why we can do it. And some of these might be other obvious spots where people would say, why don't you take this money and put it here or lower the tax rate or something like that. There's, there's a lot of places you can put it, but really there's just a few that are available to us here in Moretown. And I think if we all have a good idea of that, then we'll be more comfortable looking at these type of proposals when they come in. Because you can see, although it's a lot of money, there's, the options are somewhat limited of what we, we have to do. I think it's, it's a good project, you know, certainly with the pandemic, illustrated to all of us the need for connectivity, whether at school, work, social meetings like this. So, you know, I, Chuck, what I want to do is, is if, if not the next meeting, give us a month so that we can pick, you know, some time. I'm busy the next, because I really want to make sure that we get this right, get Cheryl Lynn, the treasurer, involved as well. She's handing out and doling out the funds and, so I want to make sure she's comfortable with what we're doing as well. If she signs off and she's responsible, so.
Of course.
She wants to make sure too, but what do you guys think? Is that a good plan?
Yeah, sounds good.
In the meantime, is there anything I can provide that will help in your discovery of, of this space?
My only question is, you know, how much we can allocate without a vote from the, without vote, you know, I, I understand. You know, I understand. My understanding is if it's not on the budget, if it's over five thousand dollars or whatever, we have to, we'd have to have a vote or something from, to spend anything, but am I not correct on that, or?
We'll have to look, give a legal opinion on that too, Ray. That's a good, I hadn't, to be very honest with you, I really hadn't put it in that perspective.
I mean, we're getting near the end of the year. I mean, we could actually put it in the budget if we wanted to know that way for next year. As it's not on the budget this year, I'm just wondering legally what we, what we can do.
Right, good question to ask. We'll.
You mean with the ARPA funds, or?
Well, with any of the funds, I think, you know, if these funds are only a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, that still leaves us, you know, one point eight maybe.
Right, true, oh, yeah, yeah.
And how we're going to do that. I'm supportive of the project, I just got to really think about how we're going to pay for it legally.
I can tell you that there definitely has to be some sort of difference in how these are accounted for from typical funds, because we are not legally allowed to dip into tax revenues from the towns. It is actually forbidden based on the legislature. However, this is allowed. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to articulate on why, you know.
If it's not taxed and it's.
The recovery funds are.
Right. Oh, with the recovery funds are.
But then there's going to be still funding after that, I mean.
Yep, and we're going to be going for revenue bonds and all sorts of areas of funding.
Right, that two million that Chuck talked about, they're not presenting us with a bill for two million.
Right.
That's what the cost is here in town. Where they're getting that, whether, yeah, they'd like to get it all from us, but they, no, they're not.
Guaranteed.
But I mean, we could potentially, we could do the seventy-three for this first phase, and then you might need another amount a year from now.
Yep.
And depending on what we have for money, and they have done, and I was going to ask them where they got this amount, but there is county money that is available. And what the problem had been is when the federal government allocated that money, they were looking at counties. There's a lot of counties in the United States that are working governments. And so there was money to the counties and the towns. Obviously, here in the state of Vermont, we don't have county governments that are working. So just recently, I just saw in the last couple of weeks, there is a solution. There has been a solution to that for states that govern like we do. I don't know, you know, how they were going to break those funds out, but it seems like you guys feel we're getting another three hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
That is our estimate. The math gets a little fuzzier at the county level than at the town level. But I believe the methodology on this was to break out the counties by population and then essentially divide the overall sum based on the county populations.
Right. So we'll find out more of that. And actually, I had asked Cheryl Lynn, she just got back to me the last couple of days about that. She hadn't seen that definitively what we're getting at, but she has been looking. And I don't know if you know anything different, Sasha, you haven't seen anything but yet. So that question is out there, but we, by then, within a month, we will know what that figure is too definitively, so we can make a more informed decision there.
Yep. And just in broad brushstrokes, the kinds of limitations on the ARPA funds, and I would encourage you all to read resources yourself. But it's things like water infrastructure, sewage infrastructure. There are some relief purposes around business, business relief for businesses directly impacted by COVID. And I think rent offsetting certain rents might be one of the options. And then telecommunications infrastructure is the other major category. But other than that, it's very restricted as to what the ARPA funds can go to for right now, whether that we're retroactively opened up in the future, I don't know, but that is as it stands today.
Very good. Any other questions for Chuck while he's here?
All right, I will expect to come back in a month's time. Sasha, I'll work with you to get on that agenda. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck.
Have a nice evening.
Yes, you as well.
Thanks, Ray. Hard work.
Yeah, it's a lot.
So are you working for CB Fiber now, is that?
No, but I chair the communications committee, so all of the emails that go out and all of the, you know, broadcasts and advertising we do, all of that stuff, I end up helping push through all the newsletters if you're on the email list. So it's a lot, but because I'm also chair of the CB, the communications committee, I'm a member of the executive committee, and we have all boards, I have meetings multiple nights a week.
Well, I know the lot. Plus, you're a consultant now, right?
No, actually, I took a full-time job back in March.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah. I worked for a dog, Danny, at the same company, I thought. So we do like, when you want to find out what breed your dog is.
Well, my daughter just did that.
Yeah, which company, do you know?
I don't know, maybe off to some deal or something, so she's good to check out her dog.
Well, if it's Embark, that's my company.
I'll have to ask her.
Yeah.
You're getting free TV advertisement here.
That's what it's all about.
Embark, yeah.
Oh, you got a bark, and you could, yeah.
Right, what about that dog of yours? Who you got?
Uh, no, no, I should like, I don't, I don't know. I want to know, I don't know. He's a good dog, I'll tell you that.
That's what really matters, isn't it? So, all right, take care.
Thanks, Ray.
We'll see you then. All right, so let's go ahead and move into reports, communications, communications. Sasha, let me start with you. What do you have first?
I've got a whole list.
All right.
A whole list.
John, can you, I've got your email about the executive question wording.
Yeah.
Can you say it so that I can correct it? Because I'd already posted the minutes on the website and I didn't want to pull them off afterwards.
If it's already done.
Are you good with it?
Yeah.
Okay. The RFP for the town of Rarot is, I left a copy there for everybody to see. I just want to make sure it's, we can go ahead and get to the paper tomorrow.
Where is that? Yep. Is this going out to the contractors that were on that list?
Yep, I've sent it out to two contractors already that Ray and John had asked me to.
Okay.
But that's going out in paper tomorrow.
Looks good to me. Is anyone seeing the question to it?
And I've been working on the RFP for the reappraisal. Does anybody have any evidence on dates and who you'd like to use to contact?
What was that, what was the last name?
For re-praising.
Yeah, no, who to contact, I would say.
Who the contact is, like, within the town for people to call and some dates, deadlines.
Let's, why don't we work on that and then bring that back to work, to okay. I'll sit with Cheryl Lynn, she's probably one of these. Anyone else get any ideas, but I don't know.
And the Green Mountain Power letter is there for signing, if you're all good with it.
That's the.
For spring.
For the spring, yep. I'll let you sign that.
And then I sent everybody the meeting owl information.
Yes.
And then there was, Cheryl Lynn had a phone call from somebody, I think it was Williston, it actually, they're gonna review it. I sent out a new one for Martha to Jolly.
Okay.
That's done.
Yep.
I have an appointment set up for the basement guy at the town hall in September. And Susan working is asking about weed whacking over at the actual library building. I don't know if that's anything that the guys do have done in the house.
We certainly can't around all the hours. But Ray, do you mind giving the list of little things to put together for the road crew?
Was that the basement guy that Callie was talking about, that company?
Yep.
What was the name of that company?
Matt Clark's not in the basement system.
And then the plumbing issues at the town hall, I got Trevor Clark to take a look at them yesterday. He called me this morning and said that a faucet needs to be replaced, toilet seat needs to be replaced, and toilets need to be re-seated on the floor. He had a toilet seat and a faucet, and he said he's just going to charge us his time.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Yep, tell him thank you. And that was Trevor Clark?
Yep. The junkyard John was asking about, the last time I always signed was August two thousand and eighteen, for Cheryl retired, and it won't be up again until twenty twenty-three. So you guys are aware of that.
And so we, what are we signing up on that, just?
It's difficult approval.
So that's, that's all, that's all they need for that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anything's changed there. They're doing the same thing.
Yep.
Well.
Just a different company.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe they're doing the same thing, but they're, uh, all the, like, the fencing and all that stuff is all down, or not all of it, but there's a fair amount of it that's not down.
Yeah.
And there's gates open, and frankly, it looks, looks pretty bad.
Looks like junkyard.
It looks like a junkyard, and it's not supposed to be real visible from what we're seeing.
John, do you notice, does the state ever inspect that? Is there any state things that take the state, right on the river or anything like that? The state must.
Yeah, you would think, yeah.
You would think they would, wouldn't you?
Right, right.
They'll probably grab them if they're in at this point.
Yeah, I'm sure they would, but there's no way they would have ever had the permit for that in this century, but.
Especially where they were, because they were way down.
Oh, was it even further?
Yeah, you could walk down, there's a hill that goes down.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All the bank goes down.
I haven't been in there in there.
My dad and I used to go to junkyard shopping a lot.
Not in my mind, I've been loved up here for a while.
I've taken some scrap there along that, you know, and they used to take it all the time, you know, little.
You know what, why don't we have just David?
For a while, yeah.
The zoning regulations, and there's got to be things that they're not doing. And I mean, I don't, you know, it's a business, that's fine, they're there. But let's just make sure they're doing what is supposed to be done, because I don't think we are at this point.
There's got to be some regulations or methods of operation that they have combined with.
Right.
I don't, yeah, I'm aware of you there, that I don't think that they're doing them.
Yeah, I mean, because there's, there's the fence, and then there's stuff outside up in front, so.
Yeah.
Because I don't even think Brown's, they don't even own it anymore.
No, they don't.
They try to sell it.
They don't own it, it's somebody else.
Yeah, so that's, and that, and that's why it carries over to the new owners, but that doesn't mean that. Yeah, they've done everything that Browns were doing.
Right, in there. So we'll take a look at it, and then, yeah, so have that one a priority for David.
Maybe on the fish, again, I think he's just going to be here with the disaster, what he, I don't know.
Yep, no, I'm just going to, yeah. All right, Sasha.
I think that's it.
All right, well, thank you. We'll sign off on those things, when we get to the business, we'll talk about the owl. Ray, what do you have first to comment?
I had Joe Gavery, I believe, fix the door knob at the town hall. Well, we had a conversation about it, and I think it got done.
You're right.
And he's also working up a price on fixing the memorial out here at the old town office. So we'll have something, it's a bit in our budget for next year. Fix that up, so I've talked to Joe about that. Reminded Martin again that I'm willing to help out with his, with his computer paperwork. I did not talk to him about having.
London.
Yeah, having him help out. Frankly, I've been pretty busy at work there. I'm one month away from retiring.
Oh.
Trying to rack up a lot.
Yep, full retirement?
Well, I'd like to think so, but probably not, but close to it anyways. I'm going to, you know, that's my goal. I may help him out as needed, but my goal is to be fully retired here.
So good being, right? You deserve it.
Yeah.
You're working hard for town. Appreciate all the time you take.
The plate's pretty full for right now.
Yep, no, that's, and I'll try to get over there and talk to them too. And if you do, there was the brush, have them look at around the library or the old library there.
Yes.
So the weed whacker. Also, when they have the weed whacker out, check the sign, I know the sign on the north coming into town, "Welcome to Moretown." There hasn't been mowed in that area.
Yes, I noticed that too, yeah.
The other thing, not a weed whacker, but maybe John or whatever you could, the other guy that came down, the mountain road here, the store, and seems like there's a crack. And I don't know, about three quarters of the way down, anyways. Is that something we should maybe put some filler in, not asphalt, but like, you know, like rubber or whatever they fill.
There is a rubber seal, or, didn't the asphalt come down the hill, you're saying?
Yeah, it's towards the, towards the bottom. There may be other ones there, but it was, and also I noticed, like, oh shit, I don't want, you know, two years, start having big potholes there, so if you can do something to put some sealer on it. When you get a moment, again, when you're driving by, just take a look and see, like, maybe I was exaggerating, but I don't think so. Anything else, Ray?
That's it.
Thank you. Don, what you got going on down there?
This is, are we, this is an old business and new business, or just what, what are we?
This is like, you know, like, you know, you have new things that you want. Yeah, if you want some news, what are you?
No, no, it's nothing to do, so, uh, we're, we got the ADA report from Bill Gallup. It's, this is, I've been just looking in on my computer, and I'm going to get some drawings made that are a little bigger. I haven't, we're going to meet Thursday, the town hall committee is going to meet Thursday, so, and to go over this and see what, you know, what we, you know, what we think and how we might incorporate the ideas that Bill, well, some of the code things that he brings up that then we have to do, but also he certainly came up with an idea that addresses keeping the whole community dance, so-called dance floor, meeting room floor, and achieving ADA access by just, you know, changing the, you know, utilizing the basement and changing where the lift is, and it's quite, it's quite interesting. So it's a first step, I don't, maybe next week we can, or two weeks, we'll talk about it again. I hope everybody gets a chance to look at it, and we'll have our committee meeting, and we can give some feedback and talk, so it's really, to look at it now, there's a lot of information there. And the other thing, I had Sasha print something up, and back in March, I did a walkthrough of the sand pit.
Oh, yeah, yep.
And I only, and again, we could maybe talk, I was going to ask if someday we could maybe, before meeting, all meet down there or something, especially with this hot weather. I've poked in there and looked, I mean, the cars that park and the people that get in there, it's just, you know, it's an accident waiting to happen sometimes in there. And especially for mine, to have access to get equipment and this, or the fire trucks to get water, and it's busy with people swimming down there. I just think it's something we could, we're not going to solve in a walkthrough, but, you know, as time goes by, and maybe we can just keep picking away at what we can do to change the landscaping a little bit there. There's that oil tank maybe right next to the river and stuff like that, you know.
So Sasha, why don't we take, it's almost good to look at our properties anyways in town. So our next meeting, why don't we, we can start at a regular time, but we'll just meet there for half an hour.
Yeah, fifteen minutes, really.
Yeah, well, keep it a half between trotting and whatever, so people are. Yeah, well, keep it half between traveling and whatever, so people are, we'll be back here at six thirty, but no, I think that's a good idea to take, it is kind of a massive, and then we can talk. I got some other things going on there too that we can talk about.
Great, okay. So, yeah, that's, that's what I.
Is that for you? Callie, anything going on?
No.
No. John?
I just wanted to bring up the data on the outbreak of COVID. It was the rec, whatever the rec program, and there were thirty-five out of one hundred and fifty kids were tested positive. Yeah, so they're obviously supposed to close it down. But just, you know, I don't know what's going to happen when school starts here. It's just, it's going to happen. So it's unbelievable, if you look at the cases in Vermont, and then we're back to the revert before vaccination. And because, and now, as you know, you can, you'll be able to get booster vaccinations. So, I'll go mention that.
Sixty-one new cases today.
Sixty-one?
Sixty-one.
That's lower than.
There was a hundred and seven on Friday, so.
And, oh, you're, well, more to Mount Mount, that Martin did cut the tree that I was concerned about. That's good. And, I don't have anything else.
Thanks. I think, I don't have anything new with this here book, so let's go ahead and let's.
I'll probably mention one thing. We are having a go-to meeting on Thursday regarding the parking lot storm drainage.
Oh, that's Thursday?
That's Thursday.
Thursday at nine o'clock?
Thursday at nine o'clock.
Yeah. She just sent that tonight, I think.
Nine AM. Yep. Oh, and then also, I just want to, Sasha, do you have a key for the town hall here?
I do, but I'm in Barbara's.
I grabbed, I lost my, I lost my keys, which.
I guess we have to make it.
Yeah, we need to get another one, but sorry about that, John.
That's all right.
Thank you for coming to the rescue.
Keys at the bottom.
And I just stopped at the town hall.
So no one's going in. But with car keys, too, that was a problem.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Oh, well. It's what, anyways. All right, so let's go ahead, we have the meeting minutes for eight to twenty twenty-one.
How much motion do you have for the minutes?
There's only one thing I don't know, Sasha, that, on the meeting notes, Sasha, is that there's a line that, something about the crack in the floor and that tell, pack about it. But what I was talking about in that was that, is it pack, yeah, no, peak.
Peak.
Peak, sorry. That they wouldn't check the floor, I was thinking I was referencing, I think I was just referencing that they could also look at the, at the town of the roads, the next sentence, which is regarding the town of the roads. So I think that's what I meant, that maybe they could take a look at that project as well. And I did send their office manager an email a while ago, but I never heard, asking if they would be interested, but I never heard back, but maybe you guys are, you know, we could send them the RFP now that we haven't written.
Right.
Because they do that kind of stuff.
Yep, all right, so there's one change, any other changes? Is there a second?
Second.
So you, Callie, on the favor, go right.
All right.
And old business, I'm going to start, old business we have, we've talked about the meeting owl, it's, the price is nine ninety-nine, you know, where you look for it. There's good reviews, based on the need, I think, we may or may not have coming up, but certainly we may have guests, you know, with other companies or places that are restricted in their travel. So I think that we should probably go ahead and purchase the owl. And we can do that with those RFP funds, that is allowed.
Yep.
So Sasha, why don't we go ahead and do that, move to purchase the meeting owl?
Second.
On the favor, go right.
All right.
Ray, do you have anything for old business?
I do not.
Don, what do you got?
Uh, no, I'm good. I mean, we are.
Look, that's not going right. Callie?
I'm just going to check in, I can't remember what his name is, Adam. I'll check in with Adam, because he does Vasa at least in like the Berlin area.
Yeah, if you do that, and Sasha, maybe you can reach out to Chad Barrett.
Yep.
See when he might be able to stop in and see us, I think he'd be a good person to, seems like they know about that stuff, right? So he'd give us an idea of that. Good, John?
In terms of the mirror, one hundred feet amount.
Yep.
Should we perhaps check with boards and see if they didn't go to that or?
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't think personally, yeah. With what the state's set, I mean, there's a lot more liabilities than it would be, I think, the benefits of it.
Yeah, whether it's in or out of the right of way, it's going to have the same.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Effect, you know, other vehicles coming in and not knowing what they're looking at, thinking that somebody's coming at them, who knows, but I think the, the negative exceeds the positive as far as the mirror, to me.
Yeah, no, I agree there. But I think.
Well, we should know the guy that came in, right?
Yeah, I think, can you let Mr.?
It might be interesting to note that he travels these roads, but he lives in Waysville. Just, I mean, Johnny went out and I asked him where they live, and they live up, you know.
Oh, so they live.
They got to go up South Hill Road, but then they cross into Waysville, I mean, it's still, he's going to come down.
Right, so they're not really Moretown resident?
No, but, you know, it's.
Yeah. We need to put up like a toll which for those people, right, or something like that? You know?
I know, really.
All right.
Well, I did have, I, over a year ago, I did have somebody ask about that.
Yeah.
At that time, I let them know that, you know, it's not, it's not allowed.
No, no, it's definitely a tricky intersection, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Maybe that's why there's never been an accident there, is because we all, everyone, you know.
It's one place people actually stop, you actually stop there, because if you don't.
You're dead.
You're dead, or possibly dead. So we looked at CD fiber, the AT ornaments, war memorials, service office, legal trails. Travis, thank you for bringing that up, we'll look in the meeting minutes for that, hopefully we'll rectify that at the next meeting. Also, it pertains to you as far as similar legal trail issues. Cheryl has been trying to meet with the attorneys to get things on our trails, whether it's both sides of the mountain taken care of, that we have going on. And so hopefully we'll get that finished up here within a short period of time. Is there any new business anyone has?
I'm wondering about the potholes at the end of the drive here. You get those taken care of?
I'm asking the boys to take care of that. They're in our driveway, right? John?
Yep.
All right, Sasha, what about you, anything new that we need to be looking at? All right, we just have a few things to sign here, and we can get out of here.
Are there any ever around here that people can watch?
Killington is the closest.
Who?
Killington is the closest.
All right, so I move to Jeremy?
I'll stop in there.
All right, Ray, thank you, all in favor?
All right.
All right. All right, thank you all for coming.
You're welcome.